January twenty seventh, meeting of Cavendish County Council of Allina. Would you open the application, please?
Yes, sir. For again for your presence, we give you thanks, who just asked that you will be with our hearts and minds as we conduct the business, people of Cavendish County, that we do those things that pleasing to your side and to their benefit. We praise you for all your many gifts and Christ's thanks. Amen.
Okay. I have a approval of January twenty eighth.
So who?
Any more discussion? All in favor of motion, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Anybody got any committee reports?
None.
Anybody got any appointments?
No.
No resolutions or proclamation? You know, I'd like to get up a resolution for, um, Bill Duff says he's retiring from the hospital board in Cecil, Idaho. It's a fellow in his district, we gotta talk to him and see if he's interested.
We'll get that ready for next meeting, sir.
Okay. All right, the appearances of Tom Timmore, Director of Cavendish County Unit. Tim?
Good evening.
Hey, how you doing?
Good. Sorry it's him, I'm here.
Okay.
But really, we just wanted to kind of let you guys know and update us on some stuff that we've done with our training department. And this is me, Dave, as our training officer, to let you guys know.
Good evening. I just wanted to kind of go over a few things that we've been doing as far as community outreach. The first thing we did was we started programs out to follow life. We're giving it out mostly to elderly people that may live alone. It's just a little folder, has all the information in it, with the sticker that goes on their door. So when we get there, if they can't give us the information, um, we can pull it off for a refrigerator and helps us give them treatment faster. Aside from that, we also have a few other programs, one's called the Until Help arrives program. That program was established through the American College of Emergency Physicians, and it combines hands-on CPR and the bleeding control class. So that way, you know, while we're on our way there, you know, more people can do hands-on CPR, which can increase our survival rates for Cavendish County. On top of that, we've also done some CPR classes with Starbucks and San Yarun. Getting, trying to keep their people certified, so when we go out to their facility or whatever, you know, they've already initiated some of the emergency care. We're trying to get in with ZUS to see if their plan, you know, might benefit from doing some CPR training and first aid training as well. As well as the fire departments, last year we did do three emergency medical responder classes, just to kind of help us with the first response. And we should have another one of those coming up probably next month or so. So now we got pretty much all of Cavendish County covered with some sort of EMR responses. And then finally, the other big class, well, two big classes. One's a safe sitter, one's a babysitting class, it's for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade graders. They come in and we go over anything from how to change diaper to how to do CPR on children and everything. And then finally, we finally got our accreditation through the National Child Passenger Seat Association, and San Yarun is now considered a car seat inspection station. So if anybody, you know, is interested in coming by, we can check the car seats, and, you know, we'll do events throughout the year to check car seats, make sure everybody's in.
Anybody got any questions, folks?
No.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Denise? You next, huh? If y'all want to leave, you can leave, you don't have to sit around.
Good evening, council. This is our mid-year agenda.
Of course you did, I just had to.
Okay. It's a little bit of a difference, I just wanted you to have a.
Okay, Denise.
Okay.
All right.
That's okay, you should have a report, a financial report in front of you, a summary. So I did this summary report on January seventeenth, and that puts us at fifty-four percent of the year. Our budget for the general fund is thirteen million, six eighty-seven, one sixty-four. Our year-to-date revenue is seven million, thirty-two thousand, eighty-nine dollars. Fifty-one percent of our budgeted revenue's been collected. Our expenditures are at seven million, three ninety-nine, nine eighty-three, and that's fifty-four percent of our budgeted expenditures, so we're right on budget with that. Our county fees and service revenue is at fifty-five percent. State revenue is at forty-six percent. Our current tax revenue is above budget at sixty-two percent, while our delinquent tax revenue is way above budget at ninety-two percent. Yay! So we had a lot of delinquent tax collections thus far this year. Our capital improvement fund, our budget's three million, eighty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. Our revenue collected is one million, two fifty-five, eight twenty-eight. Our year-to-date expenditures are eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven ninety-nine. These expenditures are mainly for the completion of John Tor, and just to let you know, that project came under budget, uh, twenty-four thousand, seven seventy-four, and sixty-four cents of the budget. So we are finished with that project. Our wastewater department, the budget's a hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred. Our revenue is at thirty-eight percent, we'll talk about that, uh, probably our next meeting. Our year-to-date expenses are at forty-four percent. The water department, the budget's nine hundred and sixty thousand. Year-to-date revenue is at fifty-eight percent, which is above budget, and year-to-date expenses are at fifty-four percent, which is right on budget. We discovered just today, we received a bill in the mail today from the city of Casey, and the bill is more than what we bill our customers, and so we're looking into that right now for the wastewater. So we're looking into that, so I hope I have you some answers by next meeting, meeting as to why that's going on. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions?
And our fees, um, just to let you know, all of our fee and lube, fees in lube came in, and they look, they look good so far, but the last batch got posted today, so everything looks to be in order with that, so.
Okay, appreciate it much, too.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes? That's emergency management report.
The last update we had was October, about part of October. I should say September, I'm sorry. As you know, we provide you with the update on education awareness and preparedness activities from emergency management agency through this date. I'm not, I'm trying to say it's last night, maybe I hadn't learned that yet. But this report is covered through last Friday, January twenty-fourth. And we have lovely pictures for you of our students at St. Matthews, Cape Girardeau, and San Yarun, Cape Girardeau, and also Foundation Christian School. As you can see, in October through January, the twenty-fourth, we did, Mr. Arm Dave did twenty-one junior emergency management training sessions with our young people. Over that time period, from October tenth until the twenty-fourth last week, Friday, there were four additional trainings, four additional planning on community-type events, and also eight state or regional activities he attended or hosted. On the back of this sheet, we have been an itemized listing of what those activities were, and at this time, you'll take any questions you have.
Okay, anybody got any questions? In the title, prepare. All right, hope planned group.
Hey, guys, Happy New Year to you.
Same to you, sir.
Um, so we got a couple things that are on the agenda tonight, and so we want to make sure we can knock them out here relatively efficiently. The first is a letter that we have drafted up for the signature of your administrator, drafted to the director of DOR. This particular issue came about, I believe it was a gentleman in town that was remitting his sales tax form and noticed that the, uh, the location for the, uh, DOR distribution was a, was an Orangeburg County location, is that correct?
It is. We have five locations, five zip codes that have homes in Cavendish County that are actually zip codes in other counties.
And, and so basically, the way that the DOR process is administered is that the, the online retailers that don't have geolocation software that basically can tie a particular address to a location in the county, ties it to the nearest post office, and the nearest post office then sublocates to the, to the county of reference. So because of this, this kind of differentiation, the, the zip code gets tied to a county, and when you're collecting sales taxes off of that alternative county, then the reporting is being done through either Orangeburg or actually a county. As a result of that, you could be potentially missing out on some collections on both your capital project and your local option sales tax. And, you know, the, the problem that we ultimately wrestle with is there's no real way to quantify what those values are. I know that the municipal association has had some conversations with the DOR, the county association has had some conversations with the DOR, and there's not been a whole lot of interest in making the online retailers become compliant. So basically, this idea here is just to say, you know, we're a small county, this directly does affect us based on the way the program is being implemented, and maybe put a little bit of local color back to the DOR and say how it could potentially be affect us. Again, the problem is, is difficulty quantifying it. This is not, say, an Amazon issue who does geolocate the actual point of sale for a particular transaction, but there are other online retailers that are required to remit sales taxes that are not actually going through the geolocating process. So I think this is the, the kind of initial step here, just continue to work with county association. Hopefully, the municipal association will continue to have those conversations. But the hope is that the director of DOR would, would take this and appreciate the fact that in a small county, you know, every dollar that could otherwise be generated and raised is, is beneficial, and it's, it largely is going to affect the smaller counties, I think incrementally more than it would affect any of the other counties in the state, or at least some of the larger counties because of the strategic locations of these, of these zip codes. So there's a letter drafted up for the administrators, uh, excuse me, for the chairman's signature, and assuming that y'all are comfortable with this terms, I want to make sure you are aware of that, you know, certainly have a opportunity to ask any question. But our, our request would be to get that letter signed and sent off to the DOR.
I think we need to get every nickel we can get. I would, I can't even believe that anybody would want to be in Lexington County or Orangeburg County or originally any of those compared to what our tax base is, so.
And this is on sales taxes, so this is on online sales taxes.
Yeah, so, um, so Lawrence, um, wouldn't, I mean, would using a nine-digit zip code fix it, or is that a possibility?
So my, my understanding is it's basically a self-reporting index that the online retailer is responsible for processing, and their internal processes are not effectively up to date. Like, the, the new standard is this geolocation software that basically will spot it to a particular live, for a particularized location as opposed to the more general zip code software that is just kind of, kind of outdated. And so the hope would be that DOR would pass a regulation or pass some, some requirement that online retailers update the geolocation software. That's about the only way to solve the problem.
Yeah, and I mean, certainly, there are a lot of mom and pop, um, people, I would think, that would be affected by this.
Yeah.
That even the cost of the software would be probably prohibitive. I'm thinking of people who sell on Etsy and, I mean, that kind of stuff. I don't know how that works, or Etsy is, would be people that do that.
You've uncovered the bigger issue here, is that, you know, there's, there, you can solve some of these problems with, you know, if you hit them with a hammer, sometimes it breaks a lot of stuff. And so I think there's been a little bit of a slow implementation because people are not exactly sure how it all is going to shake out. But when it hits close to them, I think it, the more people, the more we can make DOR aware of these big issues at the local level, the better that that could otherwise be. I, I, it's, the problem is not going to get better, it's only going to get worse as things continue to move online and retail moves in that direction. And so doing everything you can do to resolve the issue now before it gets even more expensive, I think is.
Well, I mean, we need a motion, right, to, this is chairman, I move that we, uh, direct you to sign the letter.
Denise had a quick follow-up.
I have a question, Lawrence. This couldn't have an adverse reaction on us, could it? Like, could citizens in Orangeburg County be making online purchases and Cavendish County is getting their taxes?
That, that, that could be a possibility.
Is that what you're thinking, James?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It very well could be a washout.
Okay.
The problem is, there's no way to quantify it until you actually have the true geolocation information. So, yes.
Well, we do have addresses, oh, we'll say this, we do have homes in, um, Orangeburg County that have Cavendish zip codes, so there are some. We have five, Gaston, Swansie, Elrie, um, Orangeburg, and Lexington. All five of those zip codes have homes in Cavendish County, so we think that.
But we don't have any homes in.
Yeah, no, we do, we have some, we have some homes in Orangeburg County that have Cavendish zip codes. We, we could, but they, they would all have a Gaston, Swansie, or Lexington address. So the, the issue is, is that, as, as he said, we don't, there's no way to quantify this. We're just asking the question of this letter.
Doing it the right way is the only way to.
Well, and, and the issue is, a huge issue in my community. Anywhere in San Yarun you are, doesn't matter, you're getting your mail from Lexington County. You're getting it from Swansie, or you're getting it from Gaston. And anybody who orders anything online that's not on Amazon and doesn't have this nice reporting system, that tax is going to Lexington County. That's it.
Well, it's, that's it. You've got a, so you've got Lexington, and you've got a different zip code?
Yeah. Two nine oh five three is my zip code. And if you live on the other side of San Yarun Creek, it's two nine one six oh. That's pretty much how it is in San Yarun.
As long as it's based on zip code, yeah.
It's based on zip code, yeah. And, and we might lose a couple, I mean, you might have a couple, but it's huge in San Yarun, San Yarun grows, and all the businesses up there, all the industry, they order anything, you got private business, all order anything. I mean, we order a lot of stuff online, I'm just one household.
The person who sent us the documentation that shows that he made an online purchase and the taxes were sent to Orangeburg County was an Orangeburg address, but it was a half-Cavendish County, it was just over the line.
Right.
And so he, he called us and said he, he may not be polite taxes, and I understand that's a separate debate, but he certainly didn't want those taxes going to the wrong county, right?
Yeah, I'm sure Lexington County's perfectly happy to take our debt. They get quite a good, good draw from San Yarun. And we're just losing them up.
I would think it's, it's more that way than the other way around because all, on the skirts of our county, those mailing addresses, instead of the other way around, I would think you're right.
Oh, we're, I, I know I'm right. I mean, we're, we're.
Too man known, that's a good question.
Much more than any of those Orangeburg. I guarantee you that.
We don't have, we're just wanting to find out how big or small the problem is. We're just asking, I did reach out to other administrators in the state, and I have confirmed there are other counties where this is an issue, like Kershaw County, for example, has some Richland County addresses, uh, Richland County zip codes still over in Kershaw County, so.
And, and like I said, as we grow both residentially, commercially, and industrially, I mean, it's gonna, it's just gonna go up and up and up, and we need to do something about it. We're gonna lose some really quantifiable revenue.
It's being, it's being looked at, but I would say certainly is out of order.
Yeah, we need to be proactive, that's it.
What's the, my motion, Mr. Chairman, is that you be directed to sign the letter, try to rectify this issue.
Nothing irritates me more than to see that, they say something about ZUS, and they say it's in Gaston. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor of motion, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Do you make the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. We got it all done. You got the resolution?
Yes, sir. So the next item that we have on the agenda is a, is a Resolution one, twenty twenty. It is a request from the county association. There have been some conversations back and forth as a result of the pending lawsuit with Public Foundation and the appeal that is going on, that other counties in the state are affected by the, the challenged actions in the underlying lawsuit. And the request is to make for the county association to submit an amiga brief to be attached to the responsive pleadings, appellate pleadings, um, at the, at the appellate level. And the county association asked based on, before they would, they would intercede and file amiga brief, whether or not the council felt comfortable doing that. And so this is a formal resolution making that request of them to come in and intercede through amiga brief action.
Chairman, I move that we pass Resolution one dash twenty twenty, uh, requesting amiga brief for Larry, Lawrence, this letter.
Sorry.
Okay, any more discussion on that?
One second.
You on second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? All in favor of motion, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right. Anything else, council?
I've got the next item on for new business as well.
Oh, hang on a minute, let me get old business out of me. Uh, is anybody having the old business tonight? All right. Okay, yeah, we go to new business, Resolution two dash twenty twenty.
Um, so, again, this is the last item of business, I believe, I have under agenda tonight. The Piggly Wiggly grocery store facility, the landlord has made arrangements for a purchase and sale transaction to a new, um, a new purchaser. And while we were not part, obviously, of the underlying lease transaction, the county did see fit to grant special source revenue credits by way of an infrastructure credit agreement to the, the tenant, or through the landlord to the tenant, to be able to pass those credits along as the incentive for the Piggly Wiggly grocery store to be in place. And under the terms of the infrastructure credit agreement, there are some assignment and consent rights that the county withheld with, with able to sustain by the terms of that agreement. And so our grounds for not granting or allowing for the consent transfer are basically that the transfer is going to be such that you're going to lose the operation of the grocery store facility. That is not the case. The plan is simply a change of ownership from, uh, sorry, I don't have the name right here off the top of my head.
Wheeler.
Yeah, it's the, the Wheeler Group to a group that is calling themselves St. Matthews Ventures LLC. And so basically, they are, uh, this is the one item still holding them up for closing. And so attached to the resolution is the form of an agreement amending and restating certain provisions of the infrastructure agreement. Doesn't change the credit, doesn't change the enforcement of the credit, it just simply consents to the terms of the transfer and changes the notice provisions in the underlying infrastructure agreement.
And the, and the, the deal hinges upon this?
That's, so they say. Obviously, the, the, we have, we have an express consent right, that's a consideration for the Piggly Wiggly, which is the anchor tenant and the location to stay there, and that was obviously an express consideration for them deciding to locate as a tenant.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve Resolution two dash twenty twenty.
All right, now, second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor of motion, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. That it?
Yes, sir. So that's all I have.
Okay, good, thank you. Remember to sign our infrastructure agreement.
That was the approval.
Okay. No more discussions tonight? Okay, Ted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to bring you all an update on the Lower Savannah Council of Governments' long range transportation plan for 2045. I've been talking about this for a few months now. This is a very important, uh, item for us as a county because any federal funding, which is going to be assigned to a transportation project in our, in our county, has to be on the COGS long-range transportation plan. And then the individual projects from that plan have to be moved to the state's transportation infrastructure priority or step list to then trigger the federal funding to go get the construction started and get them going. We are pleased to say that when the next available funding comes available in 2022 for our region for federal transportation projects, the group of projects, and I sent y'all this the other day, roughly a hundred and eighty-three, I think was the total, projects were submitted from the six counties, including twenty-nine of our projects, which made the list, which was, which was a good number. And also fifteen of those are targeted under recommendation from SCDOT to be moved to the step list after this long-range transportation plan is, is finalized by the COGS. They will then start having the transportation committee meetings within the COGS to decide which products move immediately to the step list to make them eligible for funding. I understand how complicated that sounds, but the bottom line is, is we're in as good a shape as we've been since I've been here in terms of transportation funding. And I will keep the public and council informed as to which projects make it onto the final LRTP plan and then to the step plan, and then over the next few years, which ones actually get funded. So, and there are five categories of federal funding for transportation projects that the COGS considers, and we have at least one project on all five things in the LRTP. And I'll be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
Any questions? No, that's good, Ted, we appreciate y'all getting that out.
Yes, sir. The second item is, well, the discussions have begun for this year's Purple Market Festival. And as you know, for other festivals that involve our grounds changes, like the Veterans Day ceremony or the, uh, the solar eclipse a couple of years ago, we have made available our employees to, to clean up the grounds. They represent themselves as county employees, even though the events weren't necessarily county events per se, and, um, and we want to clarify, last year, Mr. Westbury made a good point that he wanted to make sure we understood what role our employees were going to play, if any, in events like this. So our recommendation that we do, just like we have in previous festivals, the Honey Jubilee and last year's Purple Market Festival, that we have our employees both available to work with the, you know, organization groups. I've already asked, uh, Randy to sit in on the meeting just to make sure that, that we have an ear on organizations, we know what's going on for the grounds. But also that we make our guys available to clean up after us like we always do as we approach that event. I just wanted to bring that up to you, let you know that we understand it may not be a county event, but we need to keep our, and have our folks involved, even representing themselves as county employees, and I want to see if y'all have any objection to that. Okay. And then last, I'm just requesting that some point in February or early March at the latest that we have a meeting session that is specifically devoted to the new employee personnel policy handbook. We ready to get this before y'all and before the public, so that we can get this done as soon as possible. And I just wanted to.
We all be able to do it by the other February sometime near the.
Okay.
That be all, will you?
Yeah.
I'd do twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth.
I'd do twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. We negotiate on dates later, and we work it out.
Okay.
We don't want to lose the momentum of that, we made some good strides, and we're ready to get that.
Okay. Anybody else have anything, Ted?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right. Newspaper, y'all got anything you want to ask?
So the, uh, as far as the Piggly Wiggly, they just have to, um, the, 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 the segment is whatever, they're going to buy the building, so just have to prove all that, the agreement and everything, so.
That's right.
Okay. I need a motion to go into executive session, take our personnel matters and, uh, also legal matters. With discussion to attorney-client privilege relating to the case of South Carolina Public Kitchen Foundation versus Cavendish County. Have a motion. Someone?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor of motion, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, I got one thing before we go into the next section. We got a, um, Mack truck, it's a dump truck that's got a blown engine, and, um, and we're not going to fix it, we would've said we're not going to fix it. And I got somebody that's interested in it. Well, I told them now all this baloney you got to put up with, they will have to advertise. So get, um. So get, get Randy to, who we advertise?
Boys.
I'll give boys that.
Who?
Boys.
Boys, okay.
Yeah, we can put sealed bid, advertisement for sealed bids.
Yeah, and advertise it, then I'll, you know, I hope he gets, he does, he does.
Just out of curiosity, do we have other items that need to be sold?
Well, we just got there to sell that one small piece of property to Mr. Newton.
Yeah, I know that, but I'm talking about equipment.
Yeah, equipment and stuff like that. If y'all want us to do it, I check it out, we will.
Check it out, because, I mean, it might be a time to run a sale or something. I mean, no need to cherry pick items if we've got other stuff out there that we need to sell.
Yeah, there's one more vehicle that we can add to that, too.
Well, and like I say, have to dig everything out of the woods and everything out of there. Possibly sold, you know, I mean, while we're at it, we might.
They got, they got some refined tree growing up.
Yeah, I know, I'm playing. Time to get it out of there.
Yeah, okay. All right. You, you, the paper got anything you want to ask?
No.
Got it?